Apache Junction Council Meeting to Order. Invocation will be led by Vice Mayor Wilson and the pledge by Councilmember Schroder.
Heavenly Father, we are again gathered together this evening to perform city business. Please be with us and our staff as we continue to keep this place a great community to live, work, and raise a family. We ask for your oversight and protection, hands for all the firefighters and everyone that's been responding to the fires in the local area. We also extend this to all of the firefighters that are fighting all the fires throughout the state of Arizona. We request an additional oversight for the, all our first responders in our local areas that protect them all and bring them all home safe at the end. We also want to ask for your protective hand for our first responders wherever they are currently serving throughout. Please bring them home safe, and we extend this to our military members and their families wherever they are serving throughout the world. In the Lord's name, amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Spell them?
Roll call.
Mayor Sertie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes, I'm here.
Councilmember Barker. Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Present.
Councilmember Struble.
Here.
Councilmember Schroder.
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor?
Do you have a motion on the consent agenda?
Ah, Your Honor, just a minute. I will do the motion. I apologize, I wasn't quite ready yet.
Do you want me to give it, Chip, or you got it?
I got it. I move that consent agenda be accepted and presented and that approval will, approval be given for the Model Uniform Cable TV and Video Service Licenses Agreement and approval for Apache Junction Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Pension Fund Policy for fiscal year 2019 through 20, and approval for an intermental governmental agreement with Maricopa County for geographic information systems, GIS, data sharing.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Barker. Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Struble.
Yes.
Mayor Sertie.
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
We're gonna have Fox Young come up, and we're gonna recognize individuals and organizations that do a lot of donating and Friends of Apache Junction, see what they do.
Good evening, everyone, and first let me apologize, the computer gremlins have our PowerPoint, so we aren't gonna be able to play that tonight, unfortunately, but we do have the information, so we'll just speak to you, won't be able to follow along on your monitors. I'd like to thank Mayor, everybody on the council for having me here tonight. I'm really new to the area still, but I have to say that I am just so impressed with the community that you have here in Apache Junction. I was going over the other day and saw from 2016, over $500,000 has been donated to the Friends of Apache Junction so far, over half a million dollars, so that's a pretty big milestone. Can I get a clap? Come on! Yay! All right, and we wanted to thank some of our recent donors that have donated this year to the Friends of Apache Junction in support of the city programs and departments. And tonight Dana Canizaro is with me, and I'd just like to say that she's been on the board for several years, and this year, beginning of the year, she was unanimously elected the new president of the organization, and she's gonna do the presentation.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me here tonight. This is the first time I have presented this donor appreciation and letting you know about our big donors, so I'm kinda going in blind, and I have no PowerPoint, so you just get to listen to me talk. So we had many donations this past period, and this is about the last six-month period because we come in and let you know every six months or so, or twice a year, about the most generous, most generous donors. So all of the donors that I mentioned tonight have all donated to the City of Apache Junction Police Department, Department's different projects that they're working on. The Chief's End of Year Project is something that garners a lot of attention and support. I have Mr. and Mrs. Kenneth Stossel, Marion Kelly, American Legion Post 27, Charles Iverson, and the Golden Vista RV Resort all made generous donations to that program last year. The AJ Mounted Rangers made a generous donation to the DARE program. Then we had, we always have donations to Paws and Claws. This community very much supports the, the shelter. We had Paws and Claws donations this period from Mrs. Elizabeth McGee, Rieta Enterprises, Dennis and Don Douglas, and of course, Mr. Kurt Fonger in memory of his wife. The Lost Dutchman Kennel Club donated to the Police Department K-9 program. The Lost Dutchman Marathon Committee has donated to the AJPD Auxiliary as well as the Explorers Program, which is the youth. That might be it. Oh, Chief Special Programs, Mr. Philip Hines has helped with Chief Kelly's, any special projects he has going. Did I miss any? I think I might've hit everybody. Oh, the Explorers, AJ Mounted Rangers also donated to the Explorers Program.
And unfortunately, due to the time of year, a lot of the donors are out of town or had other engagements, so was anybody who was named able to make it tonight?
If there is anyone here, you're welcome to come up for a photo op with our lovely mayor.
I think most people had said that they were out of town or couldn't make it, but yeah, we still wanted to recognize them and let them know that we appreciate their donations. So even though you're not here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job considering you didn't have any graphics, so I know how hard that is. Announcements and current events by the council. Let's go right on Robert's side. Do you have anything?
No, sir.
Krista?
Yes, Your Honor, I just wanted to remind the community of a gentleman while back that had, his daughter Diane Sherman had posted a post on Facebook that her father was turning 96. He's a World War II veteran, and she had asked that the community send birthday cards to her father, and we did. The council and the community sent 150 birthday cards, and it's, I don't think they were able to get it up on the screen here, but they sent a postcard showing all the pictures. Oh, it, we do have it. They sent a thank you note to our community for sending all the birthday cards to him. He really appreciated it, and there, if you flip it, there we go. That was a picture of all the cards that had been sent, and so I just wanted to tell Apache Junction, thank you for your generosity, it was greatly appreciated. And then I have one more thing. I'm working with the principal of Peralta Trails Elementary School, and one of our special needs teachers, her name is Ruth, I can't pronounce her last name and I apologize. We are setting up different tables at Shopper's Supply, Apache Junction Walmart, Gold Canyon Bash's, and the Apache Junction Fries, and these are card-making tables to tell our fire crews and hotshots in the community, thank you. They just, they had asked that the community just let them know, we appreciate and support them with thank you cards, and it's just a couple of us doing it, and so as we get out there at these booths, we'll make announcements on Facebook, and our, our business, Arizona Tireman Services, is also a drop-off location if anybody has cards or thank you notes that they'd like to sign. We have a, seven days a week, a collection box there, so they just wanted to ask the community to make thank you cards for those people as well.
Oh, I, just to remind everybody, we have a young man, Logan Reichwald, who is representing Apache Junction in our, in our area. He's gonna be going to the National High School Rodeo up in Huron, South Dakota. It's his second year up there, so he's leaving on the 21st, he'll be up there. Good young man, representing Apache Junction, and is a great representation of the young people in our community and all that. Second thing is, Fourth of July is coming up, so we're obviously having the, the celebration, the Fourth, well, hopefully we have the, the fireworks, we'll see what happens with everything, but if we do, the Kiwanis Booth will be having a booth, and you can come and throw wet sponges at local dignitaries. Yeah, that's what I called you, Chip, was a dignitary. But if you just come on down, it's a good way to raise some money for our young people. And just in case nobody knows about it, they opened up Delaware Road between the Trail and Superstition, and so come on down and enjoy the wide-open road. Don't go speeding or anything like that, but enjoy the wide-open road, the bike lanes and everything like that, so great job finally, it was finally opened up. Gail?
No.
I just wanna reemphasize the fact that Delaware Road is now open, and it is a nice section of road, and definitely keep your speed down, because now it's not bumpy anymore, it's not, no distractions as you're driving down.
Okay, I want to, as you know, I've been announcing this every time, that coming up in 2022 is the founding, Founder's Day for Apache Junction, not when we incorporated, but when the city was started, and there's going to be a, a call to artists to design a logo, so watch that, and this'll be something that you'll have a chance to, you know, have something permanently used here with the city, celebrating our 100th year. Our cable company, MediaCom, gets a lot of bad press, nobody ever likes the cable company, they always wish they had the other, another one, but they stepped up pretty big on the fire because they were staging, and I think Brian's gonna talk about this also. They're staging out in the middle of nowhere, and they had no internet connections, so I don't know what it is, but MediaCom somehow beamed in some Wi-Fi for them so that they could communicate and really help in the community, so remember that next time you get mad at MediaCom. Speaking of the Fourth of July, I've get, been contacted a lot this week. You know, our, our national treasury's on fire right next door to us, the city wouldn't be here if not for those mountains, and it is very dry, and we are gonna go ahead with the Fourth of July celebration at the, at the ball field, and the, the fire department is in control of that. There won't be any fires, they're, they're professionals, they're ready for it if anything happens. However, I also have been contacted about, can I stop the people selling the fireworks in, in the booths and on the sides of the road? We can't, because that's the state law, and the city cannot over, overturn that. But keep in mind that if you've driven out of state and you've bought, and hopefully the papers and the people will watch this on video, if you have any of the things that are like the little mortars that launch up into the, into the air, when you launch those things and whatever falls comes back to the ground, it's usually on fire, and that can burn up fields and people's homes, so it's not worth it for that little bit of a thrill. And, and there's a thousand, there's a $1,000 fine, and the city, the prosecutors will, they will go for the full amount on that, so it's not worth it. Let's, let's celebrate the city and let the professionals do the fireworks at the, at the football field, and just play with sparklers, and even sparklers, be careful with them, so. Bryant?
Over to you. Thank you, Your Honor, Bryant Powell, City Manager. I wanna first start off my report by giving a huge thank you to the Friends of Apache Junction. Dana and her board have done great work, it's a huge milestone to be, when we thought of the program and revenue development, to be at a half a million dollar mark here, so thank you Dana and your team for all that you're doing. It's all volunteers, all service hours that they, that they do. Earlier today was a, a big event over at the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport Authority. Today was the Transfer the Gavel, and our mayor, Mayor Sertie, has been the chair of the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Board, and today they select, elected a new, a new, a new chairman, that is Lieutenant Governor Stone, if I've got that correct, and he will be the chair. Mayor Sertie, thank you for your service on that, on that committee, and, and it's been a, a great, great work this year, and they've done some great things, and there's many more to come, so thank you, I'll give the mayor a hand for representing the city on that. I have a comment, a few comments on the fire. First, thanks to all those who are fighting the fire, US Forest Service and all of their partners, state, local, are working hard to save as much of our precious area as possible. I wanna also thank MediaCom, they have provided at the Incident Command Post at Peralta Trail Elementary School, a one gigabyte modem for us, and the community as a free, free service, so we're grateful they could do that. You'll notice that as soon as that happened, the next day, there's been so much more information being able to be broadcast out to the community. The fire is far from people, but we also know that it is 40,000 acres now in our trails and habitat, and maybe even some history is it, is it, is it in danger. So we're hoping the fire managers will get a little help from Mother Nature on this, and hopefully that will be able to be managed. In the meantime, Apache Junction is safe, the surrounding communities are safe. There's another community meeting that's being held as we speak in Gold Canyon, and I, we will do all our best to, to get the word out and keeping folks apprised of what's going on. On May, let's see if I can get this date right, May 31st in Virginia Beach, there was, on the afternoon of that evening, a disgruntled city employee entered into the city's Public Works Department, Utility Department, and opened fire indiscriminately for no indication of why. Twelve people were fatally shot by the perpetrator, and 11 were city employees, and one was a contractor who was at the building permit, to obtain a permit. The employees had a combined 150 years of service to the city, one of them had served the city for 41 years. Six of the employees worked at the city Public Utilities Department, which is the same department where the, where the suspect worked. Couple days after that happened, I sent an email to the city manager of Virginia Beach, wanting him to know that from the City of Apache Junction, we offered our love and support from our team and sincere condolences. I wanted to share with our community that I received an email from their city manager who, who expressed appreciation for that. He said that they've been overwhelmed by the outpouring of condolences and support in response to the horrific shooting that devastated their community. The kind words and offers have helped, been generous and sustaining as we respond to this tragedy and work to provide help to those in need. Our focus has been in the families of the 12 colleagues and the family members we lost, many whom, whom life are lifelong public servants. We continue to pray for the injured community members and to assure them that the mental and physical health of our city staff are taken care of during this time of grief. City manager, we are concerned often of our safety and our concern for our city employees, so we, we again express our efforts and thinking about those who are in public service and to help protect, protect them. And then lastly, Mayor, I just wanted to remind everyone that the Apache Trail Media and Beautification Project is often going in terms of the ability to reach out to our local businesses to contribute. This flyer you may, may have seen before. We'll keep reminding council members and staff as well as the Community Development Corporation to, to encourage the conversation to happen. We'd like to see if we can get that to be fully through volunteer service and also funded through that, that process. That concludes my part of the report tonight. I have here with us Mr. Villalobos, our new executive director of the Penau County United Way, and I'd like to invite him to come up and introduce himself, and then, and then we also have a little time for some great things that are going on here in the community from United Way of Penau County. Alan?
Thank you, Brian, I appreciate that, Mayor Sertie and council. My name is Alan Villalobos, I am the new CEO of United Way of Penau County. I've been here basically since May 1st, so many of the things that we, United Way is doing here are just, I'm overwhelmed by the outpouring of the community and also the programs that United Way have here, and today I have asked Brayden Biggs, our community programs manager, to give you a small presentation or some of the things that United Way have done here, but before, I want to introduce to you my wife, Evelyn, okay, is here with me. Usually she doesn't come to these meetings, but I asked her to come, she wanted to come to Apache Junction, and she loved it already. So also, I'd like to introduce to you our, one of our board of directors who came and supported us here, Taylor Sertie, to sit in here, and I am sure that everybody knows who she is. So with further, with no further ado, I'd like to bring Brayden in. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, it's wonderful to be here. I love coming to cities like Apache Junction and being able to meet and greet all of you wonderful council members and interact with you guys, so it's a, a wonderful opportunity here. So I do just wanna take a second to go and highlight what's been happening in the community over the last week. Apache Junction, you all know is my home, it's been my home for 24 years, and this community continues to astound me with their love and support for as many of our Penau County residents as possible. So the first couple slides are just pictures, there's a, a water drive that the United Way of Penau County hosts every year in partnership with various agencies, 75 partners across Penau County, and it's the, the Heat Relief Network, and over the last week, of course, with the fires and the first responders, there's been a lot, a lot of outcry and support for all of our first responders across Penau County, and just in this last week alone, in partnership with the Lost Dutchman Related Group and the LDR Foundation, the community has raised over 20 pallets of water in one week's time. We started this one week ago to the day. They've raised 20 pallets of water, three pallets of Gatorade, and at least a pallet of non-perishable foods, and as you can see, all of this is going out to our first responders across Penau County. Earlier today, we brought five pallets of water to Superior, last week we brought some out to Queen Valley, and later on this week or early next week, we're bringing some down to our, our friends down in Oracle. So it is just a truly amazing community, all of this has come from Apache Junction, and that does come from the LDR Foundation, Lost Dutchman Related, Charlie Wise, Apache Junction Little Caesars, the Hitching Posts, and the Apache Junction Starbucks, and again, just everybody to be aware, everything is going to local Penau County first responders, and we do fully understand that our Tonto team working the fire cannot accept things, so we just wanna highlight our community and thank our community for the amazing support over the last week. Moving into our presentation here, so Apache Junction Lives United, so the, the two pictures here are from our new office and Community Resource Center, which is actually out in Casa Grande, but of course, the, the entire county is a part of that, and Apache Junction actually got to play a very special role in that. So for those who don't know, the United Way of Penau County's mission statement is uniting generosity with community needs to promote a lasting change in people's lives. We do that through our three main focus areas being education, family wellness, and homelessness. So if we look at our education efforts, our biggest program is actually our FFN program, which is our, our Family Friend and Neighbors Program. Throughout Penau County, we have 215 enrolled family childcare providers, that's made up of grandparents, other kinship care providers, foster parents, and those who run childcare businesses from their home. This is a state-funded aid program that's actually funded through First Things First for up to 350 providers, so you can see we've got a, a little ways to grow there before we're at full capacity. This is a list of the providers that we have in each one of our communities, so as you can see, there's 24 here in Apache Junction, and we partner with the Apache Junction Public Library, Head Start, the school districts, and everything else, so it is really a great collaborative effort there. We also have a Reading by Third Grade Initiative, and this comes from two different places, the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which currently has 303 students enrolled into that. Last year alone, we put a, a little over 11,000 books into Penau County, and so far, we've graduated 248 kiddos, and that does primarily focus on areas without access to a public library. Personally, I, I might be a little biased as I sit on the library board, but we have one of the best public libraries in Penau County, and I'm grateful for our community for that. And then, of course, we have the literacy kits, which you can see the sock puppet to the left there is one of the things that goes into those literacy kits, and we've put 800 of those into Penau County with over 500 sock puppets made, all to encourage our, our children ages zero to five to pick up reading, because we do know that 30% of our kids in Penau County don't read proficiently by the time they reach third grade. Moving into another area being family wellness, so one of our biggest programs is the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, and, and definitely thank you to Al Bravo and the city staff for helping us every year advertise this program to our community here, but last year, this most recent tax year, we did 1,300 countywide taxes. Through that program, we put 1.3 million dollars back in refunds into Penau County's economy. Of that 1.3 million, 462,000 was from EITC refunds or the Earned Income Tax Credit, so that could be a single parent, single grandparent, low income. A fun fact, the IRS classifies anybody below $65,000 in annual household revenue as low to moderate income, so that's about 70% of America. And just the two things at the very bottom there in the green, those are two statistics for the My Free Taxes Program, which is similar to like an H&R Block or a TurboTax. The United Way of Penau County, out of 1,227 counties that partake in that program, we rank 180 and 143 for e-filing and EITC returns. That next step right beneath that, out of 839 United Ways that participate in this program, we rank 179 and 151. So I'm a little bit competitive, and that number's gone up over the last three years, and I wanna keep seeing that so that I can come back to you guys and say that we're number one across the country. Looking into that continued, that should say 109 Apache Junction residents, not Casa Grande, I apologize for that, but seven, 109 residents of Apache Junction were assisted. Now that does encompass the entire area, so the Apache Junction, Gold Canyon area. $78,000 alone was given to residents here in Apache Junction, and of all of our total clients, 181 of them were veterans, 188 of them classified themselves as disabled, and 413 of them were returning clients from last year's time, and you can see the total returns by the, by each community at the very bottom right there. One of our biggest things that we started last year, and you can see the comparison between 2018 to 19, we started a local peanut butter and jelly drive, so what the community might not realize is one in five children in Arizona come from a food insecure household. However, in Penau County, it's actually one in four children. A food insecure household is, is something that a child doesn't necessarily know where their next meal is coming from, so we've partnered with multiple agencies, the Apache Junction Chamber of Commerce, the city, Superstition Fire Medical Salvation Army, and our school districts to create a weekend backpack peanut butter and jelly drive to be able to put peanut butter and jelly into, into the kids' homes for the summer. Last year, we raised about 288 jars, and we just wrapped this up at the tail end of April, and we raised 840 jars the second year around, and that, like I said, just ended in April, and we got everything dispersed. That does go to Imagine Prep, Avalon, and our Apache Junction Unified School District, and I'm thinking that Councilmember Rizzi, you get to pie Councilmember Struble in the face with a peanut butter and jelly pie, because you both had a competition and you beat him.
I can't hardly wait.
So I'm looking forward to that, I can't wait for that one.
You set that up.
But again, this is just one more way that our community really steps up their, steps up their game to essentially triple the, the response from the first year is, is just truly an amazing feat. And then, of course, we have one of our biggest areas that the United Way is known for, and that's the homelessness area. So the, we've helped to create the Homeless Strategic Plan in Penau County, and that's also in Apache Junction and in Casa Grande, and we've helped to lead the conversations in both of those communities, working direct- And we've helped to lead the conversations in both of those communities, working directly with the agencies, the cities, and all of those involved. We address the concerns with the local legislators down at the Capitol. And then, of course, our work primarily at the Genesis Project, which is the local soup kitchen here on ID cards, driver's license, social securities, birth certificates, getting those out to our communities most vulnerable so that it's a hand up for them so that they can get back to work, they can get to doctors' offices, and all of those things. All of that comes from our community, again, through our community donations, primarily through the Sense for Change Program, which seven of, we have seven partners here in Apache Junction that all give their money towards homelessness efforts. We also have the Keep on Wheeling Bike Program. So Penale County and Apache Junction included does not have public transportation. We started this program back in 2017 to just simply get a bike out to a community member in need. Again, that gets them back and forth to and from work, to and from the grocery store, doctor's appointments, you know, their social service appointments, all of those. Since the summer of 2017, we've been able to give out over 75 bikes. We, of course, are addressing issues with lack of public transportation, and our two primary partners with that are through the South Unit of the Florence Prison and our local Frontier Ace Hardware, who helps to provide a lot of the supplies that we use. And then, of course, I touched on the Heat Relief Network. This is an annual thing that we have every year. That's a partnership with the United Way of Penale County, Penale County Governments, CAG, and MAG. Last year, we had over 75 partners. We collected and distributed 39 pallets of water, which is over 72,000 water bottles. We help to issue heat-related warnings, and we've collaborated with APS and SRP for those high heat days, and help to ensure that something that's just happened recently, APS was in the news for shutting off somebody's electric during those heat months, we help to ensure that that, you know, is, is something that we can work towards not happening. So everybody always wants to know how we can live united together and, and how all of that happens, as well as how is the UWPC funded. So we are primarily funded through our annual giving campaigns, corporate sponsorships, grants, and government funding, community donors, and then volunteers. So if you look at the breakdown of this, our total operating budget hovers at about $273,000. The vast majority of that comes directly from the community, and that's sitting at 70%, which is $191,981. That is what we operate the vast majority of our community programs on. The UWPC designation sits at just under $31,000, and that's where somebody as a donor wants to donate specifically to family wellness, education, or homelessness. Let's say they're really passionate about the water drive, they can designate their dollars directly to that. So we run those programs off of that $31,000 there. The Penale County Agency Designation, that $20,000, $23,000 essentially, that's where through payroll deduction, we have somebody who may want to give to the local Boys and Girls Club, give to a Sexual Domestic Violence Agency, any of those, this is their opportunity to do so, and it's passed through money through, through the United Way into those local Penale County agencies, where we have 22 local Penale County partners. We have our VITA program, which has traditionally been funded $26,000 through one very generous donor. As of the very beginning of May, the Penale County Government awarded us a $30,000 grant to be able to run that program and bring that program in-house and actually look to grow and expand that. And then, of course, we have the Dolly Parton Imagination Library Program. Through a $30 sponsorship a year, you can sponsor one child to get an age-appropriate book from zero to five, mailed directly to their house, and that sits at about $1,800 there. So that pretty much makes up the entire $273,000. And then, these are our top 2018 campaigns. And as you can see, our local banner Goldfield, and then, of course, the City of Apache Junction make the top 10. That's always something that we love to see. And this list is ever-changing and ever-evolving, so it is a wonderful partnership that we have with the local agencies, the school district, our community, our chamber, and of course, the city office. And Bryant's staff have been wonderful to work with for, for as many years as I can go back to count. So, and with that, I promise to keep it under 15 minutes. So now, I'm going to turn it back over to you guys. If you have any questions, I am happy to answer. Of course, Alan is here as well.
Does anyone have any questions? I had one that came up way back. In one of those campaigns, you said that a goodwill had helped in some way, because goodwill is not known for ever helping.
Yes, that's correct.
How, how were they able to help?
So normally, the Casa Grande Goodwill actually hosts our VITA site in Casa Grande, and that's, again, one of those things that's not supposed to be in there, and I apologize for that. But Goodwill of Southern Arizona in Tucson, which runs basically everything in the southern Phoenix, Penale County market and below, partners with us directly to help push that out to their clients. So even our local Goodwill does push that information out to their clients as they come in. They have flyers in their off, in their stores and everything as well. But specifically in Casa Grande, they actually host our, our site. Here in Apache Junction, our main site is at the Central Arizona College. And then, on the weekends, because the college is closed, we move over to the public library.
Thanks.
Of course.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to thank all of the donors and all of the help that we do receive in this community. It is just outstanding.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you, guys.
Public hearing, consideration of approve, approval of proposed ordinance number 1476, amending Apache Junction City Code. And we're going to turn this over to Bryant.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, you could read the other two.
Also 11, which is going to be consideration of approved resolution number 1914, declaring a public record for amendments. And then, consideration of approval of ordinance number 1475, amending Apache Junction City Code, Volume 1, Chapter, Chapter 7. Bryant?
Thank you, Your Honor. Over the last several months, you've heard from staff plenty of times. We've had over four public meetings on this. Tonight is a public hearing and an opportunity for you to make a motion. Staff's recommendation is for approval of the 2018 Building Code, and staff is available should you have any questions. Thank you.
So as of last night, we were still working on some wording, and how did that?
Your Honor, we have provided what we think is your last item to kind of work through with possible alternative motions that you may want to consider. And those are at your, that's this, this form here. It includes the different alternatives relating to exemptions as relates to heights and permits for fencing.
So we can discuss this?
Item 12?
Sorry?
This is all for item 12.
12, yes.
That is correct.
Okay, so in the meantime, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this?
George Schroeder, 244, for West Virginia, uh, West Virginia. Now that Delaware is done, there are at, at least one already, brick wall, block wall, that's over six feet tall. And I don't know, did they, you know, you, you can say yes or no. I don't know who would know, they, if they got a permit for it or not. I believe it's on Ohio and Delaware, and it is above, and there are mysterious people already, but that's just my opinion. But they, they did it so they couldn't see all the bikes and the cars and stuff that they're working on. But I'd like to know, did they have a permit? Because it's definitely over six foot. They're not the only ones, though.
Anyone else like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open it for discussion among council.
I guess no one wants to discuss.
You want a motion?
So we are now ready for a motion.
Your Honor, I move that ordinance number 1476, amending Apache Junction City Code, Volume 1, Chapter 3, Administration, Articles 3 through 9, Department of Development Services, replacing in its entirety, Section 3-9-4, Division of Building Safety and Inspection, be read by title only, and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor? Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance number 1476 is read by the city clerk, be approved and adopted.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending Apache Junction City Code, Volume 1, Chapter 3, Administration, Article 3-9, Department of Development Services, by repealing and replacing in its entirety, Section 3-9-4, Division of Building Safety and Inspection, repealing any conflicting provisions and providing for separability.
We got it. We kind of did it backwards there, but we, we got it. Do we have to do it again?
You don't have to put it in the right order, but...
So that was number 12?
That was 10.
That was 10.
That was number 10.
That was number 10.
That's fine.
We're going to do now number 11? Do we have any more discussion on it? And I don't have to have a public hearing on these? We already did, or should I?
Well, you read three, the three titles, so that was the intent, to have one public hearing for all, and number 11 and 12 go together.
All right. Is there a mo- is there a motion on number 11?
So the, the motion for 11 and 12 go together?
No, two separate motions, but they're, they're connected.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Resolution number 19-14 be approved, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with city clerk entitled 2019 Amendments to the Apache Junction City Code, Volume 1, Chapter 7, Buildings. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Roll call.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
And is there a motion on number 12?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance number 1475, amending Apache Junction City Code, Volume 1, Chapter 7, Buildings, adopting by reference that certain documents entitled 2019 Amendments to the Apache Junction City Code, Volume 1, Chapter 7, Buildings, be read by title only, and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
I move that ordinance, oops, nope, you got to read first.
Are we doing 12? So which alternative do we?
So this is just for the resolution part, where we're reading it by title?
Okay. Number 12 is the ordinance.
She also, this is, she just needs to read the title only?
Correct. Read the title only at this point.
I'm, uh, I got to find the ordinance. My apologies. Do we have the ordinance? I don't have the ordinance.
1475?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is just the emergency.
Right. I don't have it.
Read it by title only?
Right. Which, I don't have. I don't have it. Can we get it?
There it is.
Yeah, it is. Right there.
Thank you. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending Apache Junction City Code, Volume 1, Chapter 7, Buildings, by repealing and replacing in its entirety all articles under Chapter 7, and adopting by reference that certain document entitled 2019 Amendments to Apache Junction City Code, Volume 1, Chapter 7, Buildings, repealing any conflicting provisions, providing for separability, and providing for penalties.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance number seven, excuse me, 1475, as read by the city clerk, be adopted and approved with the following amendments that we use in incorporation of the red line division, version, excuse me, dated July 10th, 2019, in a clean format.
June.
June. Oh, June. Did I say July? Ju- oh, I'm fast forward. June 10th, 2019, in a clean format, be produced by the building official with the following modifications. Then, using alternate two, accept the alternate language for exemptions as presented by staff regarding building permits for fences or block walls not over six foot, in height measured at three foot from the exterior side fences. Construction in federal patented easements, FPEs, adjacent to public right-of-ways or across natural drainage require a zoning review.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
I don't suppose you'd let me pass, right? Okay.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
No.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Five to two, Your Honor. Motion passes.
So that is the last one, right?
Now for the good part.
Yeah, yeah. Council direction to staff on selection of the Penale County Complex Retention Basin as an off-leash dog park.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Liz Langenbach, Parks and Recreation Director. At your June 3rd meeting, we shared with you the Parks and Recreation Commission's recommendation to choose the Penale County Retention Basin as a future dog park site. And we shared a lot of information there. We've had several public meetings through our Parks and Rec Commission, as well as here with the council, and gone over a lot of wonderful ideas and kind of the justification for that site. All of those presentations are available online, and folks can kind of view that. But this is the one that the Parks and Rec Commission has shared with you, and we shared that last meeting. Tonight, we are here to receive your final direction, as well as any questions you might have prior to that. And we are respectfully requesting that we have a vote to move forward in selecting this site as our next site. To begin the design process, we will be using development fee funds for that, that can only be used for projects such as this, so no tax dollars on that. And then, to also move forward on seeking grants, as well as other sources, to assist in the funding of the project, and to begin coordination efforts with Penale County to generate an IGA that would allow us to share that, that facility. We currently maintain that property, and we have a current IGA with Penale County. They're very open to this whole concept, and so we would be requesting direction to move forward on that. So, any questions?
Any questions or discussion? Seems everything fell into place very well on that.
Getting, getting that way.
So do we have a motion?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, 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 yes. I move that direction staff be given regarding the selection of the Penale County Complex Retention Basin for an off-leash dog park. Two, one, begin the design process. Two, seek grants and other sources to assist in the funding of the project. And three, begin coordination efforts with Penale County leadership to update our current IGA for that property.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Definitely, yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Woo-hoo!
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Now, what was that vote? Now, what was that vote?
What was that, Rob?
Is that a yes or a pass?
That was a firm and solid after 20 years, yes.
Do we have a motion on upcoming council dates?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that an executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 PM for Monday, July 1, 2019, and executive session at 6:00 PM and work session at 7:00 PM for Tuesday, July 2, 2019, in the City Council Conference Room and City Council Chambers located at 300 East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona, respectfully, respectively. Other meetings, if necessary, respectively.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Woo-hoo!
Councilmember Evans?
Yee-haw!
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Respectfully, yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
This is a time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Each speaker must have already filled out a request to speak form and handed it to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in discussion on the issues presented, but may respond to criticism, and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly and/or place this matter on a future agenda for council discussion. There's a three-minute limit for each speaker, and I have two. First one is Tess Nessar.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Tess Nessar. I'm here tonight representing Apache Junction Chamber of Commerce. I want to announce to the public the annual awards banquet that the chamber gives awards out every year. It's going to be hosted by Road Haven, and it's a Hawaiian luau, a real Hawaiian luau. It's going to be Thursday, June 27, 2019, starting at 5:00 PM, at Road Haven at 1,000 South Idaho Road and here in Apache Junction. It's to celebrate the people and businesses in our community that make us exceptional. Tickets are $50 a seat or $250 for a table. The Apache Junction Chamber Community Awards Luau is a time to reflect on the accomplishments of the prior year and honor the outstanding small, medium, and large businesses, nonprofit volunteers, firefighters, police officers, teachers, and professors for their contributions to our community. These award winners demonstrate community involvement and leadership, commitment to customer service, business success and growth, dedication to employees and membership in the chamber. And in addition to recognizing our award winners, this year will be a fun Hawaiian luau theme with Hawaiian-style food, beer, wine, and Mai Tai bar, entertainment, prizes, and much more. And if anyone in the community is interested in buying a seat or a table or being a sponsor, the chamber is still very happy to receive your funds and hope to see you all there. I'll be there. And thank you very much for hearing me. Thank you.
George Schroeder.
George Schroeder, 244, West Virginia Street. I got a couple of them real fast. Delaware is great. It's going to be a racetrack. So just fair warning, first person that dies, they're going to own this city. I'm going to make sure of it. Two. If AJ goes ahead and punches a hole in the new cement, because they covered up a federal waterway, the warranty for that work is null and void. I've already talked to ADOT about it. They're very much aware of it. So you covered up a federal waterway, and there was no permits or nothing involved. So, two, three. It's going to flood, absolutely. I know I got the drainage pipe removed, because after we had it removed, Agateo and the Apache Trail flooded out real bad. That's what happened as a result of moving that drain. That flooded out my backyard all the time. So, woo, thank you, Emil. Last night, there was twice a kind of brushed-over your questions. One, aerial surveillance has been around for 25 years. They can do it at a snapshot six months, a year ago, or they can have real-time motion for surveillance of a property. Now, they have four levels on their GSI, that's the correct term for GSI. They have four levels, public, city, city quasi-state, and police. They've been using it for years. They can use it anytime they want. They don't even have to ask you. So that's a misnomer. They can use it anytime they want. They've had it for years. The code enforcement people, since the county abdicates any kind of responsibility, even though Title IX says they have to, they don't. I've had to call the police to get them to come out, the sheriff's department. They did, but what a way to go, huh? So these code enforcement officers can, upon request, go and health and safety issue on a property anytime they're requested to do so, even though this person, that person, that person, that person says, oh, no, 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 that's too much of a liability. They have the right. That's good. Thanks.
Anyone care to respond? Don't think anyone does, so stay, don't anybody cause any fires out there, and we'll be adjourned.